Welcome everyone to the city council meeting for Monday, April 27th. We have call boarder and roll call fish man.
Troy Sellar.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Terry McLung.
Here.
Mickey Snyder.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
We have six.
Dan, pledge of allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the approval of the agenda, we have a gentleman here with, from Cruising Associates, Dan, and he's going to make us a presentation for the Tourism Development Awards.
Okay. Oh. No problem. Okay. It is my honor to be with you tonight to present this City of Distinction Award. Cruising Associates has been fortunate enough for the last three or four years to be presenting sponsor with Arkansas Business to recognize cities who excel in certain areas, and we have three categories, three size categories of cities, and for 2014, thanks to some great work from the Eureka Springs Art Council, which apparently is a very energetic and successful group of volunteers for the city. Eureka Springs was the winner for tourism in cities under 5,000. So that announcement was made at the Municipal League Winter Conference, and we had plaques made for each city, and the booklets that you will see, yours is on page 12, an ice article. It is my pleasure personally to be able to present this, as I am the financial advisor for the Eureka Springs School District, and has been working with the district for several years now, so it's my pleasure to be able to do this as well. And this is, I know it's the second City of Distinction Award that the city has won, possibly third. The last time I was here, I remember you were having a public hearing on the taxi service in town. So I think that was a couple of years ago, but I know for a fact that this is the second one, and so Mayor, it is my honor to present this award to you on behalf of Arkansas Business and Cruising Associates.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to the coming spring and summer. I know things are probably getting ready to start hopping around here. And let us know if we can ever be of service.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was the award that we had to look glass, plaque that we brought back from the Municipal League, so quite an honor to be awarded that again. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Yes, Mayor.
We need to add a quick discussion of the May 25th date for meeting, since that's Memorial Day.
Okay. We'll put that into the new business. Anything else?
I'll do fluoride under my council comment.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor of approving the agenda are as amended?
Could you shut the door, please?
And turn it down.
Why is it so loud?
Because they have the volume up out there instead of down.
All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Everybody received their minutes and have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. I got.
Any changes, additions, corrections? If not, all those in favor, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. One of the things I would like to do is introduce you to our new fire chief, Randy Ates. We appointed him the first of the month, and he's been on duty actually since February 1st as interim, and then we appointed him full time the 1st of April. So I wanted to have Randy come up and meet y'all and say good words.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be able to stand before you as your new fire chief, and I wanted to have a chance to introduce myself and see who the council members were. I look forward to working with you in the future, and I also want to let you know that if anytime you have any questions I can answer for you, or anything that we can do from the fire department or EMS side, please don't hesitate to get in contact with me. Also, while I have your attention, I'd like to pass out our first quarter report. This is just a generic report, gives an overview of what we've done in the first quarter of the year, as far as fire calls, EMS calls, what type of calls, where they were, and a little bit about the financial side as well for our analyst billing. So if you guys would like to take one and pass them on down. And again, if I can be of any assistance in the future, please don't hesitate to get in touch with me. I'm looking forward to being your fire chief. Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
We have a, and I believe you have on your agenda, a HDC nomination for Ronnie Fanning. Everybody have a copy of that? We'll be, I think, should bring him up for nomination at the next meeting. This is for y'all's information, his story district. I don't believe we have anything else under the commission or any of the other comments. I guess we do have public comment, whoops, Mickey.
On planning, I have a planning comment.
Okay.
The planning committee heard an expert last meeting, two weeks ago, in regards to the size of homes, and with the amount of international law that we all have to go by, to try to pass something would be a near impossibility, and would be highly suggested not to, because we would lose in court. So the planning commission is dropping their look into the size requirements.
Into minimum size?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I wasn't listening. Would you say that again, please?
We had an expert come to the meeting and explained, 35 years of experience, and explained with all the state and international law and everything that's used in regards to safety, well-being, so on and so forth, and the size of a dwelling, that it would be wrong for us to try to make a law, and if we did, we would be all but guaranteed to lose.
Yes, sir.
I mean, this is not on the agenda, but I'm sorry, I mean, I don't quite understand. You mean somebody wants to, to put up a wooden box they can live in it? Is that what you're saying?
No, you remember how you brought up that a home, if someone was going to build one, it had to be X amount of feet big?
Mm-hmm.
This is what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Okay. We can't put those limits on or anything, because it's already done.
It is?
Yes. And in trying to restrict or change, we would be going against international law.
Then where is that located? And I'm sorry, I-
I'm not the expert. I can give you the name afterwards.
Okay.
And the contact. All I know is planning commission has, after listening to it, has chosen to not take any action.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
And, do you have a comment on this?
The fellow who came, Terry McGuire, is, I don't know, he's currently certified as an architect, but he has a background in architect, architecture and planning and zoning, and after the minutes are approved tomorrow at planning, if you'd like, I can send the planning minutes to council, so there'll be a broader understanding.
Yeah, I'd like, thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, they just wanted me to announce. Plus, I'm also supposed to be announcing that I have stepped down from my temporary seat on planning, effective last reading. So we have an opening.
Well, we still need people who are interested in being on the planning commission, please come by and pick up an application. We need some people to be of service in through here, so we have a forum on there, and this is an important job, the planning commission, so please, if you've got some time and interest, please come by. Public comments, I do not have, is there a clipboard going around? Would you mind grabbing the clipboard, please, sir? My assistant has gone on vacation, so, thank you. Oh, Laura.
Coker.
Coker.
Mickey, check that door.
Laura, are you out there?
Honored council and Eureka citizens, since this is the only opportunity a citizen has for an integrated approach that is not otherwise potentially manipulated, I beg your, your time and attention. So my name is Laura Coker, my AKA is Coke, C-O-K-E. Coca-Cola was my moniker, but of course Coke is official, at least in part of my family. And I'd like to apply for a temporary domicile residency permit to be a part of this culture in Eureka, and I have another AKA. I was privileged to meet Officer Handley, I believe, or Hadley. There was an anonymous allegation of misconduct. One, one component was true, and one was, well, let's just say it constitutes slander when it's spoken, but when it's written in the police file in your newspapers, it is liable. I was not screaming in public, but as I had no witnesses immediately surrounding me, that would have been difficult to validate. So I think you have some issues here in Eureka. I know how and why many of them occurred, and I'm dedicated to supporting the council, and I do give you all my due respect and pledge fidelity and loyalty to this community as long as I'm a part of it, or whenever I leave, however it happens, and my country. Now, I've been in touch with Governor Hutchinson, and I'd like to apprise you, the 2223 issue was brilliantly solved. We have a condition whereby the rights that were vacated, religious rights, parental rights, medical exemption, and other issues were vacated by the fluoride, and there's profound misconduct regarding that, and I've asked the FBI to investigate, as I mentioned. And Governor Hutchinson wisely vacated, that is, he integrated exactly what you had listed in terms of human rights, all the dignity accorded and the respect and the duty and accommodations for the disabled age, crazy, lazy, criminal, and otherwise. And so therefore, he removed the teeth, so this argument between the power of the council to impose penalty for misconduct is false, at least as I read the law. I'm pretty good with law, at least the logic and the spirit of it. I know the spirit of the intent by this council when you made the emergency measure, and I'm saying Governor Hutchinson did a great job. Now, if you ever noticed, your grid is incredibly over-engineered for a town any size in any state, including California. So what you have is a harmonic convergence spiritual center, which is why the dignity and respect accorded to all people under all federal and state statute is imperative. So people must look at their own conduct, the letters that have been flashing around and the hate speech, the mandate to fly specific, the equivalent of gang flags, I'm sorry, the rainbow, to those who study Judeo-Christian scripture, or those who study the sky. They mean different things, but nobody has a right to mandate to boycott a business if they don't fly that flag. Now, the American flag, the Arkansas flag, official state seals, those are all emblems that are duly authorized. So I will be caucusing with anybody who's willing to meet with me and explain those items, and it was an honor to be able to call the governor's secretary and speak with her personally, and quote scripture, Revelation says, "Do not oppress the widow, the poor, the alien," as in undocumented, and, you know, those of us who have followed that scripture, as well as others. So I'd like to visit the metaphysics sometime, I hope I can get there. So, Eureka, we are a power source of phenomenal capacity, and I credit everybody who stopped the madness. If that 345 kilovolt line had gone through, it would have produced a hum, 119 to 120, of enormous power, for really evil purposes, for weather control and other unknown phenomena that I do witness and experience here in Eureka. And fluoride is going to potentiate the electromagnetic field underneath. Fluoride loves to combine with metals, and it loves to carry them into our central nervous system and our brain, which is a magnetite crystal-empowered quantum computer. But my dentist evidently didn't study physics, nor fetal development, or any of the other sciences, and so I beg to differ with their opinion, and I reject the lobbyists who have done that. So I had a lot more to say, and I do credential, highly value our alderman, Mr. Mitchell, who is going to go present the issue on no lead in the water, and I'd like you to, actually, we can push that now to a recognizably aware senate and house, by any means necessary, to get pure water laws empowered. We must mandate that fluoridated products from any source are labeled as being produced with fluoridated water.
That's your time to bow out.
Okay. Anyway, I'd like to say thank you, and I'm glad that I did not listen to the slander. Watch out for Mr. Mayor. Okay, I agree. Watch out for Mr. Mayor. I have every confidence in Mr. Mayor and this council. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Yeah, glad to meet the other crew. That Coke's flashdown was awesome.
All right, well, that was, she's our only public comment, so we'll go on to our unfinished business. And can I motion to discuss the update on council meeting?
So moved. Tag it.
All right. I think Mr. Don, where's Mr. Don Bass? He's around here somewhere, I think.
We have his report.
We have his report.
Here he comes.
I don't know whether y'all had the chance to read the report. After y'all, I gave my report last time from what Don had talked, and then y'all came back and had some additional questions. I thought it'd be better if I brought the gentleman in here who's responsible for setting up the equipment upstairs, actually go through some of this. He's actually has itemized and came through with what it would cost, and through here, and I think, and he may have noted it through here, I think the only thing that I saw that was my opinion was the fact that it would probably take two people to do this now instead of one. So anyway, if y'all have any questions, Don is here to ask, answer, any of those, or to elaborate. Mr. McCone?
Yeah, I do, and that is in, in the reading of this, that the, apparently the, you say here that sets up recording equipment in advance of court sessions.
Yep.
So that could make it difficult.
When that happens, it will be impossible, because she'll have her stuff up there, it'll be, all be set up, and we won't be able to rearrange the room and remove her recording equipment. I don't think we would have-
So we couldn't even have the meeting there?
If she's set up.
Yeah.
And she has been setting up for a Monday court on a Friday, so that it's all set up when she comes in.
And then she doesn't, and then court goes through till 5:00?
Yeah, well, that's, you know, that's always open-ended. We don't know when it will end. It could go up to 5:00, doesn't usually. They have been having court, though, on Monday and Tuesday, and when that happens, then she leaves it up for the next day, and so that would preempt our use of the room.
And you'd still need, what, approximately, you say two hours?
If we have that equipment up there in the box, it's going to, I won't have to break down equipment, I'll only have to set it up. That's going to drop the setup time back about a half hour, and the important thing is, though, we have to have enough time to get it set up and test it and get it working, rather than just, you know. It doesn't take that, that long to get it all set up, but you got to get it working too, and sometimes that can be a problem.
And sometimes court lasts a while.
Anybody, Mickey?
Okay. On your list of expenses, the two most expensive things, what are those? I don't, I don't read this kind of language.
The highest cost is the digital mixer. That's that thing in the box back there in the corner.
Okay.
And what that does is it takes all, in this case, 10 channels of sound, and mixes them down, and it also has these little gates on, so that as the microphones are spoken into, it shuts some microphones off and turns some microphones on. So that, that's what its job is. Up in the courtroom, that's exceptionally important, because where we're up there, we have those speakers, and if all the mic, we have 10 microphones on all the time, feedback becomes a real problem. So we had to have a digital mixer in order to shut the mics on and off automatically, and that helps with feedback.
So whether we had it on, on TV like we do right now, whether we had that or not, we would still need that thing?
Yes.
Okay. That was my biggest question.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
And the other one? There was another, the other large cost is the microphones.
Mics, okay. All righty.
Also, I think, point out, you notice that there's no camera that's on here, and I think that's because we're able to use this camera without a problem.
Right. I didn't, the camera is by far the most expensive thing. It was 7,000-something when we bought it five years ago, and it really isn't a problem in my mind. There's little risk in unhooking that and walking it upstairs and setting it down. That's not our risk. There's just two cables, and they're made to be unhooked, so I didn't see that as a problem, and we can really cut the cost that way.
Mr. DeVito?
Does any of this equipment required for live broadcast, and what I'm getting at is that we don't go with a live broadcast, that we can do a tape delay? Does that eliminate any of this equipment? If we didn't, no. The short answer is no. We would use all this equipment even if we didn't go live.
Any other questions?
Well, my only comment is, we cannot continue to be in this room. This is an affront to the community. I can't tell you, I watch little bitty towns and their city council meetings, and they address the audience. They don't face one another. This is great for a boardroom, for a corporation, but it's improper for a city to conduct business in this manner. So regardless of the cost, we have to be diligent in finding a way to get out of this room. If we only pay, if we appropriate half of this cost this year and the rest next year, and the goal is at the start of next year to move out of this room, then so be it. But I personally feel we are not serving the community in the way that we should be.
Mr. McCone?
And, and there I disagree. I mean, like the courtroom, you know, having occasional problems and having meetings there, so we occasionally have problems in meeting here. It's not, it's not every meeting that we are overwhelmed with, with people here. So it's worked for years. It's, it's not the most ideal situation, granted, but until, you know, like the old hospital or something opens itself up to the city in a position where we would move on a permanent basis to do something like that, I'm not, I'm not for spending the money, no.
Mr. Snyder?
Have you checked any further in with the main trolley office, and what was the other place that was still a part of the fire department?
Mainly the problem, most of this place was parking, with the police fire department. The trolley station, transit station, parking isn't a problem there, we're not getting much space for what we're achieving.
Even if we would take over the top floor?
There, we're going to end up problems, because it is funded by the feds.
Oh, I forgot about that part.
Yeah. So, you know, they take first priority over the city. You know, we can, we'll be, end up in the basement, and-
Yeah, and that doesn't change the size.
It doesn't. It would allow a few more spaces, but not significantly, and I don't think it'd be worth the cost. We'd be basically, at that point, we'd either have to get another camera, or everybody would move up there, so we'd either be doubling the cost of this, plus the cost of construction and everything else.
Just had a brilliant idea. Randy, why can't we use the fire department?
That's what I said.
When?
The fire, fire station and the police station.
Oh, I didn't know you meant this one. I'm talking this one across the street. They're going to be vacating it.
They are?
It's going to be for sale.
It is?
Well, I, I think there, we're, we're going to run into renovation costs and everything else.
Well, I know, well, that was the whole point. They were moving out, because it had to be renovated and everything else.
I think that'd be even more cost than, than what we have.
Really?
How much did we save on setting the election on May 12th? Was that $3,000?
That's $3,000.
Okay, that's half of the cost here. I would move to set aside and earmark that amount of money to go against the purchase of equipment for next year.
Got a second?
Wow. I can't, no.
Sorry, James. Okay.
I think we need to keep looking, though.
I very much appreciate where James is coming from, and I totally understand and support the concept, but, I mean, if we're going to go into the budget next year and have some money for this, let's just budget it at the first of the year and not, you know, try and set it aside right now. That was my concern. I think at the first of the year, when we're budgeting, we can, we'll just, we'll set aside some money at that point in time for equipment or something. I'd like to know more where we're going and what's needed and the whole package, but, so I'm not against in any way what Mr. DeVito is trying to do, and I understand the concept. I'm just not willing to start setting money aside right now until we have something a little firmer.
And going toward that thing, my, my plan this year, being on previous councils, is trying to establish in August, starting the budget review for 2016. I'm not sure it's going to work, but that's, that's my goal. So anyway, by, you know, October, November, we'll know where we are, for sure. Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, we definitely have got to find someplace else. I don't want to commit to money until we do something, but can we get maybe a list of city properties that would possibly be feasible? I'm thinking of the building next to the parks office that had the kids in it for a while, you know, Eureka kids.
That's still, I can bring back, I can bring some things back.
Well, that would have, the parking, I've been in the building, it's huge. It would be more than sufficient for us to have a council meeting, and I don't know how much-
Unless it's been remodeled upstairs, it's got, it's broken up into tier three.
I want to say, boy, it's been years. I want to say the front, you go in level. It's the back where you have stairs, but I could be thinking of the other building. But that's the thing, it's got all that parking, it's still centrally located.
Well, I'll keep on looking.
But any kind of- But any kind of city property we have that we can maybe utilize.
Sure.
But I kinda like that idea.
My final comments are that while we may feel comfortable in this room, the community does not. And if we are to serve the community, our constituents are the ones that we should be looking out for. They don't feel welcome in City Hall at these council meetings. And I think that's a serious issue that we've neglected for far too long, and we need to resolve this. Thank you.
All right. Um, the next, uh, item is the update on the water meter installation. Can I have a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second?
Oh, second.
All right. Uh, I'm not sure if I sent you guys, um, the little note that I got from Dwayne last time about the water meters?
It's a little half-page.
Yeah, it was basically saying about how many meters. We have about 1,800 meters and, and out of that, uh, right now, we have about 37% of the commercial completed, uh, 20% of the residential. And that gets you back down to about 24% total. We ran into some glitches, uh, with our, uh, in trying to analyze the financing and what our future income's gonna be. A rough, and we're still looking at that, and hopefully we'll have that, again, I hate to say this, we can put this off till, till next week, but, uh, or in two weeks. The, uh, we're looking at probably somewhere between 15% increase to 25% as a high, uh, additional increase in the water revenue. Uh, but we're not sure yet exactly where we are because of, uh, like I said, there, there were some glitches. We've had some issues with our, uh, water rates and water bills lately. Uh, also, and I think most of y'all know that we are having an increase, uh, from Carroll Boone, and we're gonna be seeing what impact that's gonna have. I think right now, it's an impact of several thousand dollars a month that we're having to pay out. So we're having to see where that's gonna be, uh, into, uh, other areas. And I hope to get some more information on that at the next meeting. Mr. Mitchell?
So the percentage of meters that have been put in so far was due to probably weather, probably the, there was a period of time where the, they didn't have access to enough meters. The, the company that was making them-
Correct.
Was, was working on that. And, uh, I, I think that came up. Is that still an issue or is there a better flow of?
I think there's a better flow, and now it's just a matter of, of time and, and getting it done. We're still looking toward the end of the year for, for completion of everything.
And, but when we discussed this the first time, I, I thought there was, people understood that and that, that we even had at this table said that looking at an outside contractor. And I, I do understand why it's probably better to do it in-house. I do understand. But I thought that at least our people were gonna supervise that, that being put in. So there, there was oversight of it. And if that would've sped it up, the installation, so, but, because I guess what I'm concerned about, if you've got all this money sitting out there, and, and that's revenue potential, and we've got infrastructure projects, we got, we've got a lot of things on, it, it just concerns me, and I don't think this is the case, but it kinda concerns me that we're not making the Herculean effort to recoup revenue as much as we seem to spend. That's the way I'm seeing it.
Well, it's, it's one of our priorities. It's one of my priorities with, with the water department.
All right.
Unfortunately. And I, I can talk to Dwayne about that, seeing if he thinks, has changed his mind about hiring an outside contractor. It's not, I think when our water people get going, I think they're able to put two to three water meters a day on the residential. Now, the commercial takes a little bit longer because it's a bigger, bigger deal. But we're also, uh, we're almost 40% done on our commercial, and that's where our main of our water-
Sure.
-revenue comes in. Mr. McClung?
If I remember right, didn't he say that in approximately a year? And I mean, I can look that back up in here, so. I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty quick doing it in-house, I think, really.
And, and we are saving, saving a lot of construction money too, or contractors money.
Well, you have, you have the other issue. If you do put contractors involved, you're not, the, the meters aren't available.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a problem with getting the meters. I mean, they're backlog, so, you know, you can only go as fast as the meters can get here.
I thought you said that we're getting, that the meters were coming better, so that was my, that's why I thought.
But it's not, it's, we still have a backlog.
Okay. Got it.
So.
I agree with your point about if we can do it now, we'd make more money and, you know.
Money's money.
Yeah. Well, and that's, you know, that's what I've been trying to, I'm just trying to stress to-
Thank you.
To Dwayne in there, on there. Uh, all right. Any other comments? Uh, well, we actually, uh, now we're down to, uh, to new business, and we're gonna have a, do you wanna go ahead and talk about, before we get into new business, go ahead and talk about your trip down to Little Rock, David?
If, if you don't mind, I'll be glad to do it.
I mean, we can do that now instead of the city council comments and-
Be glad to. I had the opportunity to go down to the Arkansas Department of Health on the 23rd of, of this Thursday. Uh, we received an invitation based on the resolution that Eureka Springs passed back in January, and the letter that we had also sent down in regards to the issue of fluoride in the water and, and no lead. Uh, the mayor received an, an invitation from the, um, the director of the health department that one speaker could come down for 10 minutes. So I went ahead and went on down and, uh, was able to give a, a brief presentation that I had worked on. I shared a copy of my presentation with the mayor, so he'd be aware in advance in case he had something to tell me if I was going too far with what I had to say. But I did, I appreciate that, that I had the opportunity. Uh, this week, Becky Gillette just sent me a, a proof of the article that she's gonna have in the paper, so I think that her, her article will very clearly summarize what took place. But I also wanna thank this lady by the name of Jenny Bulsworth, who runs an organization called Secure Arkansas. And she had a video photographer there that recorded my part of the meeting. I also understand very clearly, the state health department is, is in a political corner when it comes to the fact that the, uh, the physician surgeon general for the state of Arkansas, Dr. Bledsoe's mother is Senator Bledsoe. And she was on the committee that the, the Brian King bill went to that was discussing the option of local option to have fluoride in the water or not. That, he wrote the bill up, sent it to committee. Uh, that, the day that it came up, there was four senators that, that were there at the time. When they got ready to have the discussion and the vote whether to send Senator King's bill to the full senate for a vote, Senator Bledsoe, the surgeon general's mother, got up and left and did not vote. So therefore, the bill died in, in, in the committee. Uh, if I was sitting on the state health department and, and my funding comes, and the surgeon general also sits on that, that committee, I, I could see, I could see where they had a little problem there, and I understood. I also was aware that going down, that, uh, it was an uphill battle for the issue of fluoride. And the reason is, is on the state health, on the state health department, there is a fact sheets called "The Arkansas Department of Health enthusiastically supports community water fluoridation to promote good health." So I was pretty sure right up, uh, upfront that, that it was an uphill battle. However, we, uh, we did present and had two points. One, I ask, because the state health department was, was notified by the, the bill on fluoridation that they, that they would be the department that was responsible for the implementation, and they, and the, the state empowered them. Then you look at the Arkansas Department of Health's mission, and you look at their vision, and you look at their rules and regulations that very clearly say they're empowered to pass regulations and rules. So I, I tied all of that in together, and I asked them two points. One, to either do a rule or a regulation that allowed local water districts and the consumers to have in writing from any supplier of fluoridation chemicals, that those chemicals were safe for human consumption and or external use. Number two, that they follow the safe drinking water federal mandate that says no lead added to water. And that Eureka Springs was requesting that either they do that by order or by, uh, requirements in their, in their regulations and give us that opportunity. I didn't think they were gonna make any comments or do anything at that time, but they were put on notice. I, uh, we'll also be going to talk to Dwayne to see if, what the cost would be, and would there be any options here at the, uh, our local level in sampling the water supply as it's coming to us from Carroll Boone, and then at some random points of faucets throughout the city on a random basis, and just check for lead. Because it is a very serious problem, and definitely the federal government says no lead. And when you look back at a product specification sheet from the supplier that's getting ready to supply the, the fluoridation chemicals to this city, there is 10 to 50 million, um, parts per million of lead in the chemicals that are gonna be, uh, fluoridating our water. So we will be getting fluoridated water probably in a week. That's not gonna stop. But this Secure Arkansas and some people are still working diligently on this issue. Thank you.
Thanks. We appreciate you going down and taking the time and, and doing the presentation on there. All right. Uh, I have a motion to discuss our May 25th meeting date.
So moved.
That is Memorial Monday, I guess.
Right. So we need to switch our day. The very next day is the planning commission meeting. Other than that, I don't know what get scheduled.
Uh, James?
About the following Monday?
Maybe the first?
Yeah.
We'd have one on the first and then, uh, then the eighth. No. Yes.
What would happen if we'd skip one?
Is that right?
Well, the way our agendas are looking, it-
Nothing, not a problem with me.
Terry?
Might be able to skip it. I mean, I don't know.
The 25th?
So Monday.
The 25th is the Monday, which is Memorial Day.
That's after the election, though, shouldn't we?
Might I make a suggestion that we evaluate at our first May meeting?
Which is?
To see what-
Is on the agenda.
-the agenda is going to look like, and if it's like tonight's agenda, I mean, I don't think any, if there's any harm in missing that one meeting.
Well, let's go ahead and put this up for our, on agenda topic for discussion on the 11th then. Does that, makes everybody approval?
And you might wanna-
Second.
-look at like a Wednesday or Thursday or something of either that week or, you know.
Or you can meet them night, too, just 'cause, uh, closed.
The turnaround time is, uh, it makes it really difficult to do it one, one part. So I would encourage either Wednesday of the week-
At all.
Twenty-seven.
Right.
Or not. If there are, if there's a significant-
That's what I would think, too. That would make a lot more sense to me.
Right.
Wednesday's, nothing going on at Wednesday night. Okay. All right.
So I made a motion, we have a second-
Yeah.
For putting it on the agenda.
Okay. We'll do that.
Terry seconded.
Which actually brings us to our agenda setting. We have anything from anybody?
This might check, uh, been on the hospital situation.
Okay.
And just get an update.
Let me do the hospital and the water meters. I'll, I'll put them both on that agenda.
Could, could I get an update from somebody that's, who does the HR functions here? Is that finance department or Diane? Is it possible to get an update on the process of, in, uh, city employees pre-screening before employment, what that process is?
And-
It's besides an application, there, there is probably some other points that are, that are done when an employee comes and fills out an application. What is, what are, what points are involved in that process for screening?
Would you just like to have a copy of the application?
Is that all there is?
Well, I'm sure there's an interview process, too. The main thing is the, is the application.
Background checks, uh, background checks or drug screens. There, there's a lot of other points that are involved in the process of, of employment, and there's, besides, there, there's a bigger process than just an application.
I'm not sure if that's in our handbook or not. Do you know, Mr. Weaver?
Um, well, one thing you mentioned, I, I know is not directly covered, is the drug screening part, because that varies by department. There are certain laws that require certain of the city employees to be drug screened under one mandate and another for others. So that I know that it would vary by, by the different type of jobs. I don't think the rest of it is directly covered in any detail in our handbook.
You might want to just come down and talk to Yvonne.
What I'll do is, is I'll just ask if the city clerk could get me a copy of the, the, I can get a copy of the employee handbook, and I'll look at that first and not put this, ask to put this on the agenda.
Yeah. And then you might, if you got any questions, holler, and then we can talk to Yvonne and, uh-
Yeah.
She's our HR person. It does vary department to department on there. And, you know, the fire department has certain regulations, police department has certain, uh-
I could, I could see those, yeah.
Yeah. So, all right. Anything else? Anybody? Uh, council comments. Bob?
Not for me.
Mr. McClung?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
James?
Um, yeah. Um, in a little over a week from tonight, uh, early voting will start on ordinance 2223. Um, it, uh, it's an ordinance that's receiving a lot of attention, both, even internationally, nationally, statewide, locally. Uh, it's a very important ordinance because, uh, it, it grants civil rights to the last group of people that do not have the civil rights that unfortunately some of us take for granted. Um, I know when we craft laws at, at this table, uh, they're not always perfect. Uh, even the constitution required a, a bill of rights because they didn't get it right the first time. Um, I know I've, I've addressed, uh, both the chamber of commerce and, uh, their lawyer and the lawyer from the repeal, uh, group, and this was, uh, a little over two months ago. And I asked them, uh, if they had any concerns, because there has been some criticism on the law. They, they've made some rather large claims that I feel are unsubstantiated. But the important issue was that if they did have concerns, to bring it to the council. And it's been well over two months, and nobody's brought anything forward. Uh, so I think that's a significant thing. Uh, this was not something that we just pulled out of thin air. Uh, this, uh, this law was originally crafted in Fayetteville with a, a group of attorneys. Uh, and, uh, Lamont Ritchie, who's a quorum court member and also was a, an attorney, uh, fashioned that ordinance to, uh, to Eureka Springs standards. Uh, it's a good, sound law. Uh, and it does provide, uh, the civil rights for, uh, a large number of people in our community. So I'm encouraging everybody to, if they have any questions, you can go to Keep Eureka Fair on Facebook. Uh, it has a lot of information there. Uh, you can go down to the old Nelson's Leather Shop on Spring Street. Uh, there's a lot of information there. Uh, if you have any questions, please find out, because unfortunately, there's a lot of disinformation, and, uh, that's unfair to the community that people are being untruthful about this law. So educate yourself, and, uh, a little over a week from now, voting will start. Uh, please vote. This is a very important issue for the future of our community and the people who live and work here and visit here. Uh, so, uh, it's important to exercise your constitutional rights.
Is it?
Jim? Dave?
Obviously, bye-bye T-shirt. You can tell I support everything that James said, and the steering committee, and all the people that have worked diligently in, on this effort and continue to work on this effort. I'd also like to say thank you to the people that put in that absolutely fantastic painting on the staircase. That is, is a very colorful, lively, tourist-friendly addition to the city. That is a very colorful, lively, tourist-friendly addition to the city.
Ricky?
Yeah, I'm going to speak up, too. I've been biting my tongue. I'm so glad finally someone stood up and spoke out in regards to the fallacy that 2223 would now allow men to attack women in the ladies' room. It's like, come on, guys, give me a break. Start turning our little brains on. I'm so tired of the fear-mongering, the lies, the misdirection, the deceit, everything that's going on. It's ridiculous, and it's uncalled for, and this is Eureka. We don't do that, we don't allow it, we don't like it. People who were born here are one group of people, and I can't speak for them because I'm a transplant. 41 years' worth, but I'm still a transplant. My kids were born and raised here, but I'm a transplant. The vast majority of people who are transplants to Eureka Springs were involved in the civil rights movement that started, well, more than 50 years ago, but 50 years ago for my age. All of us were involved in civil rights, and civil rights is not just black and white, male and female. Civil rights is everybody. If you're a human, you need to be treated equally to every other human on the face of the earth. That's what civil rights are. That's what we stand for. That's what we were liable to lose because of the city, or the state shenanigans, and we choose not to because we, as Eurikans, know better. Get out and vote for equality, fairness, and civil rights. Thank you.
Trus?
I don't have any comment.
All right. I've got kind of one, I guess, announcement. Most of y'all probably saw or heard about. Windrock International received a $249,000 grant. That's to help boost the economic development for Eureka Springs, Berryville, and Mulberry. Mulberry actually has, and part, this was a previous grant, but they ended up getting a factory out of these planning grants that Windrock got. There was a, an edit, I'm not even going to try to pronounce it, but it was an industrial grant to help develop a new factory down there. But, what they're going to come in and help us in Berryville to look at, see, holding some technical assistance for planning, so we can see what kind of economic development we can have in Eureka, and also go along with our booster our natural resources and sustainability. So, I was kind of excited over that. That was part of C-3, which is a nonprofit organization that's trying to pull together Berryville, Eureka, and Green Forest all together in the county to develop economic development. So, that was, that was a pleasant surprise. And a lot of that was due to our Finance Director, Lonnie Clark's, being familiar with a lot of the people down at Windrock. He's the one that contacted him and got him to come up, and so that was a good kudos for him. As far as events coming up, May is, the entire month of May, as everyone knows, is the May Festival of the Arts. May the 1st through the 3rd, we're going to actually, I guess, have a couple of different parades. We'll probably have the PT Cruisers on the 1st through the 3rd, they're going to be here. May the 1st, Compassion Plays, opening night at 8:30. May the 2nd, at 2:00 PM, we'll have the May Festival of the Arts Parade. And I think it's going to be a good parade, probably one of the better art parades that we've had in a long time. People have been putting in a lot of work into that. Gallery Stroll, 6 to 9 on that same day, and then also Drumming in the Park from 6 to 8. And then May the 3rd, we'll have the Incredible Edible Art Show out at ESA from 3 to 5. And then the classic movie down at The Odd will be Mildred Pierce at 7:00 PM. May the 7th through the 10th will be the Punkberry Music Festival out toward Butler Hollow. There's some posters going around for that, and that's, they're anticipating quite a few people showing up out there. So, May the 9th will be the Spring Arts and Crafts Show up at Pine Mountain. That will be from 9 to 5. And again, we'll have the Gallery Stroll, 6 to 9. Music in the Park in the evening from 5 to 7, and the Ozark Corral at The Odd from 7 to 9 on May the 9th. And then May the 10th will be John Two Hawk's Mother's Day Concert at 2 to 4. And a special thanks to the American Legion Walker Wilson Post 9 for their new flag up at Plainor Hill that they put in up there, so. And other than that, I have nothing else. Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Say it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.